Meeting the journal, meeting, um. I'm ready to go.
He's right there.
It's the beginning of, uh, May the sixth, twenty twenty five Mainland Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty five. All right, let's, uh, start with our invocation and pledge. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray to you today for your grace and your forgiveness in our shortcomings. We ask that you give. We ask that you give us this grace, Lord, because you are the great I am and you will help guide us, uh, in our decisions and our daily lives. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. My mentor, Mr. Gary Neville, told me that I don't have to go through all the particular since we, I mean, meeting procedures, since everybody is here, so we're gonna get right to be, right to our business. Um, the first thing we need to do is we need to approve the Mainland Planning Commission meeting, uh, minute, uh, held April eighth, twenty twenty five, subject to any necessary changes or corrections, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Mainland Planning Commission meeting held April eighth, twenty twenty five as submitted.
Second.
All right, I got a first and a second, all in favor. All right, that is six to zero. All right, we're gonna get into public, uh, hearing portion of this, uh, two point one, which is S P dash twenty five dash six, Pentecostal Holiness Edition Site Plan. All right, um, the partial number is zero three dash zero five seven nine one. All right, Mr. Carey.
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a site plan approval for ten Edwards Lane for Pentecostal Holiness, and it is in addition for a fellowship hall. Uh, the structure is to be six hun- six thousand three hundred square feet. There are forty-three parking spaces required, sixty-six are provided, and for churches and places of worship, it is, the parking standards are dictated by the main sanctuary. Here is the site. It is off of Old Jessup, just north of Glendale Elementary. And here is your site plan. And here's a zoomed-in version of where the Fellowship Hall will be located. Your elevations. And your possible motions. We do have Pete Shonauer on behalf of the church, and that is all from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Any questions for Mr. Carey?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shonauer? It's your turn, buddy.
Good evening, Commissioners, Peter Shonauer, tied border engineering, representing the Pentecostal Holiness Church trustees. I'm just here to ask for you to approve the site plan as presented. I think it's pretty straightforward, but answer any questions or at least do my best.
Commissioners, we got any questions for Mr. Shonauer? Gentlemen's doing a good job tonight. All right, it's time to open the public hearing portion. Is there anybody that would like to step forward in favor of S P dash twenty five dash six? All right, hearing none, seeing none, would anybody like to step forward, um, in opposition of S P dash twenty five twenty six? Hearing none, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing portion of that, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve S P dash two five dash six as presented.
All right, I have a motion, I need a second. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Six, zero again. All right, moving right along to two point two, S P dash twenty five dash seven, that's exit twenty-nine truck wash site plan, parcel zero three, zero two, six, five, six. Okay, Mr. Carey?
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a site plan for a truck wash over exit twenty-nine. The structure is proposed to be seven thousand six hundred fifty square feet. There were two other applications approved at this site, Z M twenty-four dash two, twenty-seven, and C U P twenty-four eleven. The applicant is also requesting a variance to the buffer requirements, and I'll get into that shortly. Here's the site. Just west of Flying J. And at the corner of three oh three and seventeen eighty-two. And here is the site. And here's a zoomed-in version. And here's a buffer layout showing, uh, the proposed buffers on the site. The area in blue is proposed to meet the requirements for the type E buffer with plantings. The area in red is proposed to have a type A alternate where that red is located. There should, is supposed to be a twenty-foot buffer, uh, due to residential against commercial. Um, however, due to site conditions for storm water management, a type A alternate is proposed. And then the areas in green are requested to be existing vegetation. And that's everything I just spoke through. And these are your possible motions. Do have Brian Braun on behalf of the owner here as well.
Mr. Carey, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Where it's supposed to be, where it is red, where the residence is on the other side? Have those people been contacted and made aware that the appropriate, um, buffer is not going to be required there? Or that it, it possibly could be changed?
Not to my knowledge, uh, staff has, uh, required to notify, um.
Let me revise, have they reached out to you? Has any residents from Fancy Bluff reached out to staff about being concerned about that?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, any additional questions?
So if you go, I do one, so if you go back, it looks like the parcel behind the red says, um, zoning is H C and, um, M twenty and is currently used for commercial and residential, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So if we scroll over here, so it's a shop, I believe?
It, it, it was a, a heavy, um, truck repair place at one time. I don't think it is now.
Yep, and then there's a mobile home or was a mobile home right around here somewhere, but it is one parcel and, um, it has two zonings.
Yeah, a- and no one lives in that mobile home, to my knowledge.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions?
I do have one more question. I believe on the Flying J parcel, there is kind of the wire fencing that the D O T uses a lot along roads. Is there fencing in front of this one as well, or no?
No, there's no fencing there.
Okay. I just know that litter from the Flying J is a big issue, um, so they're constantly having to pick that up, but that fence stopped some of it, but I would assume this won't have that love, letter, level of litter that, you know, you see out of Flying J. Um, so that's why I was asking.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any additional questions, Commissioners? All right, moving right along, let's have Mr. Brian Braun step forward.
Yes, sir, good evening, Commissioners.
How you doing, sir?
Doing well, glad to be here today. Um, just to elaborate, um, on the pink or red area, there is a fence being installed. Um, along, you know, we reduced the width, but we are installing a fence as part of the alternate, so.
What height would that be?
I believe it's a six foot, six-foot height, um, fence, so that does, I think, help that particular zoning. I'm here to answer any questions, I don't want to keep us, but I can answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of Mr. Braun? You okay?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about the barrier, what they were gonna put, but he's.
All right, perfect, I think we got it, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna open the public hearing portion of this. Um, would anyone step forward, would, would anybody like to step forward that would like to speak in favor of this project? Uh, S P dash twenty-five dash seven, exit twenty-nine truck wash site plan. All right, hearing none, seeing none, would anybody like to step forward in opposition to this site plan? That would be in opposition of S P dash twenty-five dash seven, exit twenty-nine truck washing site plan. Hearing none, seeing none, we're gonna close the public portion hearing of this. All right, um. Commissioners?
I move to approve S P twenty-five dash seven as presented.
Second.
All right, I got a first and a second, all in favor. Six, zero is the vote. All right, moving right along to two point three, which will be S P dash twenty-five dash eight, that's River Ford Site Plan, parcel zero three dash zero three, three, five, three, and zero three, zero three, three, five, four. All right, Mr. Carey?
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a site plan reapproval, so this site plan was approved back in twenty twenty-two. Here's the site. Uh, the site plan has received an extension, and there is currently an open construction plans on the site for infrastructure. It is a one hundred and seventy-unit multifamily development. And it meets all requirements for zoning, so this is just a reapproval of what was already, or request for site plan approval for what was previously approved.
I have a question, it's more about regulations, uh, subdivision regulations say that, uh, if you have started construction within, by the time the expiration date arrives, that it would, I mean, you, your grandfather then, you keep going on that, it's not like that with site plans, if you start construction on a site?
That is correct, but it's for building permits, so they would have had to pull a permit for a, one of the apartments, and that would have grandfathered them in.
So, so it's, the, the, the horizontals, what Mr. Neville was saying, um, the horizontals are not?
They don't count.
They don't count until you go vertical.
Inside the building.
I never, I never knew that.
It has to be a vertical structure.
So you have to, you have to, um, make vertical progress within two years of your approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, you learn something new every day. All right. Do we have any additional questions from Mr. Carey? Chris, you're doing a great job tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lemmings?
Jake Lemmings, Robert, Civil Engineering, uh, Chris gave a good overview, uh, just a little, a little bit more information, uh, uh, the construction has begun on the site, it was sitting for a while, just some of the, the owner was, you know, waiting to kind of see how the economy shifted with the election and everything else. Um, so now they're going, utilities are installed and, you know, they're working on the horizontal. And when they went to go pull for a, um, building permit is when they noticed that the site plan had been expired, so that's why we're here today. But no plans have, have changed, the grading on the site, you know, has already begun and, and well underway. Um, just trying to pull build permits at this point, so I need another site plan.
All right, any additional questions? Any, any questions for Mr. Lemmings? All right, thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna open the public ho- uh, the public hearing portion of S P dash twenty-five dash eight. Would anybody like to step forward and speak in favor of S P dash twenty-five dash eight River Ford Site Plan?
I've got my timer.
Mr. Smith?
I'm Julian Smith. And my timer is, okay. I'm Julian Smith, I reside at the dead end of Old Canal Road, and I own some undeveloped property overlooking the canal. I, speaking in favor of this application, as I did some years ago, when the, uh, with qualifications, when the original site plan came before this board. I think this is an excellent location, uh, for this kind of housing. It is, after all, uh, within a short, uh, walk, uh, bicycle ride, uh, from all kinds of shopping, from groceries, from pharmacy, uh, from an emergency care facility, restaurants, and so on. Uh, I'm only sad that the sidewalk, the new sidewalk, is on the other side of the road, and there's no sidewalk connecting, at this point, no sidewalk connecting this development to, uh, the, uh, the shops, uh, along Canal Road. The, uh, website, uh, oh, and it's also close to, right next to a, uh, storage place where people can rent, uh, storage for the things that they can't have on their, in their houses, because they have no garages, and they have limited parking, and there's also rental space at the storage facility, uh, for R Vs, uh, for big boats and so on, the things that people cannot bring on to this property. The, um, one of the things I found very interesting about this, uh, one of the things I found very interesting about this development is the bait and switch website that's been up for about a year now, that promises, among other things, um, extensive, uh, an extensive nature trail system. Now, my, uh, and s- my look at this property does not reveal any, um, nature being left, uh, except a few trees, and if they're gonna have an extensive nature trail system, they're going to have to, they're gonna have to build some nature in. And one of the ironies about this site is its very name, River Ford. Though I, uh, support this application, uh, I think the name is, is silly. Um, it's a name used, uh, in other sites around the country. Uh, it's silly because there's no river on the site, nor is there a ford that is a crossing of that non-existent river. And the whole site is going to be surrounded by a chain-linked fence, uh, which cuts it off from the nearest access to nature, which is the extensive, uh, tr- uh, tree line system, uh, owned by the county uh, on the west side of the historic canal. And the county has from time to time, and did so recently, cut the, uh, the old, uh, path on the east side of the canal, and if you haven't visited the canal recently, all you have to do is drive a- along Arnold Road to the gate, to the. all you have to do is drive a- along Arnold Road to the gate, to the Flexi facility, park along the road, there's plenty of parking, and walk over to the canal. And you can walk for a half mile to the north, a half mile to the south, uh, and it's a lovely site. It would be a great place for, uh, canoes and so on. I'm hoping the developer will go to the county, and I hope you might recommend to the county when this comes up, I hope the developer will go to the county and say, let us have access to the edge of the canal, and let us pay for putting in a footbridge or some other form of crossing, so people can take long walks on the east side of the canal. They can walk their dogs, they can ride their bikes, nature is close, and this would be a wonderful opportunity to honor this wonderful canal, and I thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, anyone else like to step forward and speak in favor of SP dash twenty-five dash eight? Hearing none, seeing none, would anybody like to step forward and speak in opposition of SP dash twenty-five dash eight? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we're closing the public hearing portion. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of SP dash two-five dash eight as presented.
We have a motion, we need a second.
I second.
All right, I got two different seconds, y'all take your pick. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Again, we have a six, zero in favor vote. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Mr. Carey, do we have any, um, announcements? I forgot that at the beginning.
No, sir, we have no staff announcements.
We have no staff announces, announcements. All right, Mr. Munford, do you need to say anything? We gave you something to work with tonight?
We did.
Perfect, all right, that's what we're after. Everybody ready, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So adjourn.